Good evening, welcome to the District 225 Board of Education meeting. Madam Secretary, would you please read the roll?
Mr. Dowdy.
Here.
Mr. Galwayke.
Present.
Ms. Mullenbeck.
Here.
Mr. O'Hara.
Here.
Ms. Segwin.
Here.
Mr. Schein.
Present.
Dr. Steinberg.
Here.
Seven members present.
Item two on our agenda is a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our meeting this evening. We have a relatively light agenda. We have our typical opening items of community comment, board and superintendent reports and consent. We'll then move to our tax levy hearing and votes. And then we have one regular agenda item regarding superintendent transition planning process. So thank you, everyone, for joining us. I move to item three on our agenda, which is recognition of community visitors. This is an up to thirty minute portion of our meeting. We always value the input from our community members. If anyone wants to address the board, you have up to two minutes to do so, and we ask you to respect that mark. Please give us your name and address. You don't have to, but it does help us with follow-up. We remind our audience, the board does not respond to community comment. We listen very carefully. Please keep in mind that we maintain confidentiality and privacy. We don't discuss individual employees or students. Please note that the board does not control the topics raised or the substance of public comment. We remind speakers to direct their comments to the board, and they should relate to district business. This is not a political forum. We remind speakers that their comments are not automatically protected by any immunity or other legal protection, and we ask everyone to maintain civility and respect. With that preface, we do have one person who signed up to speak tonight. It's Ishak Lot. Did I say that right, sir? Wonderful. Nice to see you, sir. Yeah, I mean, you might a little help with the microphone.
There we go. Green means go.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I'll keep my comments relatively brief. My name is Ishak Lot. I'm a resident here in Glenview and a parent of two children at Glenbrook South. I represent the Glenbrook Muslim Civic Association, and I wanted to come on behalf of our group, a small but growing group here in the Glenbrook community. We want to extend our heartfelt thanks to Superintendent Johns. We recently saw his notice of retirement here soon, and so we wish you the best in your upcoming retirement. We've had a chance to work together over the course of the last six months. We thank you for your sincerity, your genuineness, and your care for all of the students here in the district. With that, we welcome Dr. Gravell. We look forward to working with you as well in the coming years, sort of all students here within the Glenbrook district. So, thank you, and good luck. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Lot, appreciate the comments. We now move to item four on our agenda, which are board and superintendent reports. Dr. Johns.
Thank you, Mr. Dowdy. I have a few things before I turn it over to our principals. A couple of things I wanted to cover first, I think is on the mind of many people, is an update on the status of the fire situation that we had last Monday. As you'll recall, last Monday, we had a fire alarm and a fire and some water damage that required us to cancel school for the remainder of the day over at GBS, and I want to provide those, some details. On Monday at nine thirty, the fire alarm was triggered, indicating a fire in the woodshop spray booth finishing room. Almost simultaneously, we had two heating coils fail and burst, causing massive water damage over at GBS. The fire began due to a welding spark igniting lacquer overspray, which then spread to the filters in the spray booth. Just to give some context, those filters make up a panel that's about ten foot by ten foot in total size. Attempts by the teacher and a student to extinguish the fire with fire extinguishers were unsuccessful, as the fire quickly grew beyond control. The teacher closed the door to the finishing room, which, according to the fire department, significantly helped contain the fire and limit smoke spread. The woodshop's sprinkler system activated automatically, releasing between one hundred and fifty to three hundred gallons of water per minute. The sprinklers successfully suppressed the fire before the fire department needed to deploy hoses, which helps reduce water damage. But as you can imagine, one hundred and fifty to three hundred gallons of water for a minimum of ten minutes is an awful lot of water. The sprinklers remained active until disengaged by the fire department, as per their procedures and safety protocol. No injuries were reported among the teacher or student present in the room. One responding staff member was taken to the hospital for evaluation and later released. Students and staff evacuated promptly and effective into sub-freezing temperatures. It was approximately fifteen degrees. After client, after clearance from the fire department, evacuees re-entered the building and were located to large indoor spaces like the theater and the gymnasium. Smoke, the smell of charred materials, water damage, and the two unrelated coil failures made it necessary to cancel school for the remainder of the day. Student dismissal posts on logistical challenges for us due to limited bus availability. The bus company, because it has charters during the day, only had ten buses available for at least seventeen or eighteen routes, and they did the best they could, and we had drivers have to run multiple routes with little guidance. Coordination was complicated by the presence of personal cars, students leaving, and parents coming onto campus, and that delayed our bus movement to get them onto campus. However, despite these difficulties, the building was eventually cleared and students were released safely. I commend the administration's leadership for getting us through that situation and making the tough choices in amongst all the chaos that that day brought. The staff exhibited their usual professionalism and level-headedness as they helped the students, and we appreciate the students' cooperation during a challenging, chaotic situation. I have great gratitude for the parents who were patient in delaying their arrival to the school, which helped staff manage the dismissal process more effectively, and wanted to let you know that in total, we put out six communication messages and posted on the website a web story summarizing the event. The spray booth remains out of operation while it's being released, though the rest of the woodshop has resumed functionality. Preliminary cost estimates for cleanup and repair is approximately a hundred thousand dollars, and we'll have ongoing meetings to review the incident and implement measures to prevent future occurrences. Another update I'd like to provide is updates regarding District Thirty-four's withdrawal from True North. As you know, we are a part of consortium of eighteen school districts that make up the special ed cooperative called True North. If any of the members leave, many of the costs, the non-tuition costs, would be redistributed amongst the other school districts. And if District Thirty-four leaves, it would constitute about a thirteen point two percent increase in our particular cost. Glenview Thirty-four reaffirmed its intent to withdraw from True North earlier this month. They're following the Articles of Agreement that were established in twenty seventeen. In terms of next step, District Thirty-four Board of Education is expected to adopt a withdrawal resolution next Monday, December sixteenth. The resolution, the petition, must be filed to the True North Leadership Council President and all members, district superintendents and board presidents by the beginning of the next year. There will be action required by the other remaining member districts. Whether we get the receipt between now and January one, we'll have sixty calendar days in which to evaluate and discuss a resolution and petition whether or not we authorize and approve of their withdrawal. And I'll provide additional information for the board prior to then. We should not need to have a special meeting, because we have two meetings a month, so we'll have the ability to be presented with, ask questions, and discuss the withdrawal petition and resolution, and have a vote within the sixty days. So we shouldn't have a problem. True North Legal Council will provide draft motions in template language for us, just as a outcome scenario. If all seventeen districts approve, District Thirty-four will be permitted to withdraw. If only one district denies the request, then the request will, they'll have to go through what's called the non-consensual process, and that would require representatives from the North Cook ISC Board and the Lake County Board of Education to come together and do a hearing and then make a determination. So that is on our horizon. And then finally, some positive news. Cook County, as I've talked before, there's a Cook County ordinance, the paid time off ordinance, that's based on the Illinois Paid Leave Act, which gives up to five days' worth of leave in increments based on the number of hours a person works. So, for example, a part-time employee who works forty hours would get one hour of leave for every forty hours' work, up to a max of five hours. That is not in place for anyone who's under a collective bargaining agreement. So it would apply to substitutes, out-of-district coaches, activity sponsors that are out of district, and student workers. Obviously, this puts school districts and park districts under a great deal of strain financially, and it comes into effect on January one. Superintendents around the area, I think about a hundred superintendents in Cook County, united to try to get an amendment to exempt school districts, and we failed. And so we've been working with the two villages to see if they would pass an ordinance that would provide a home rule exemption so that these wouldn't apply to us. So I attended the Glenview council meeting last, I'm sorry, board meeting last week. The village voted on the ordinance as a home rule community to exempt schools and parks from the Paid Leave Act. Speaking at the meeting was District Thirty-four Board President Scott Nelson, Cook County Commissioner Scott Britton, who both spoke about the impact that these ordinance, the Cook County ordinance, would have on school districts. Unfortunately, the Glenview Village Board voted seven oh to extend the exemption. We'll learn tomorrow night where Northbrook is at. We know that it's on their agenda for tomorrow night. We've been working with representatives from the village board, or the village. Hopefully, we get this exemption. I do not know what happens if one town gives us an exemption and the other does not. So that does represent a considerable sum of money for us, because all employees not under a CBA would effectively, if they're full-time, have five more days off. Either we'd have to have substitutes for them, or we'd have to pay them. And in terms of after our sponsors, coaches, whatnot, there are simply no subs for someone who coaches in the evening. So that could have quite a big impact on how we operate our schools. So we have good news on the horizon. We'll know more tonight. And I'll write the board with, I mean, tomorrow night, and I'll update the board with what we find out. So that's my update. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hughes. Are you doing both updates tonight? So Ms. Hughes has the honor of representing both schools tonight. Ms. Hughes, if you would.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to present on behalf of Dr. Georges, who is both attending and serving at a professional development conference this week. So first, from GBS, in athletics, it has been a great start to winter sports. Varsity Boys Swimming won the Deerfield Relays, winning seven of the ten events and setting a meet record. Girls Basketball defeated both Nutria and Main South. And in wrestling, our JV and varsity boys meet, beat Main South, and in boys' basketball, they beat Main South and Prospect. In arts, Orchuses hosted Lights Up last Friday with guest appearances by Bangra Beats, De La Crew, Latino Heat, and Titan Palms. It was a wonderful performance of many different genres of dance. In activities this weekend, GBS hosted a VEX competition. Four Titans made it to the semifinals, and then ultimately, Imad Majid was crowned as one of our tournament champions. Imad has now qualified for the state championship, which takes place at the end of February. In academics, last Thursday was the eighth annual Women in Business Breakfast. The event, co-sponsored by the GBS Women in Business Club and the GBS CTE Department, aims to bring the women leaders of today, together with those leaders, those becoming leaders of tomorrow, for a morning of networking, discussion, and inspiration. Approximately ninety GBS girls were joined by twenty local women professionals. The event includes a round robin networking breakfast and a panel Q and A session facilitated by a moderator and featuring multiple community panelists. Now, I'll shift to Glenbrook North for us, for high school. And so for activities, wanted to highlight that Model UN participated in the University of Chicago Lab School Model UN Conference this weekend. Sixteen students competed, seven received awards, and our team was awarded the Best Medium Delegation Award. Congrats to our team and sponsor, David Dolnick. And this week really kicks off our big push to raise funds for Owen High School in North Carolina, who was significantly impacted by Hurricane Helene this year. This Saturday, students from the class boards collected donations outside Sunset Foods and Jewel, raising over four thousand dollars. I had a chance to visit the group at Sunset Foods, and I was really impressed with their positivity and enthusiasm, even in the cold weather. This week brings several fundraising and connection opportunities, including signing a banner for staff, writing letters of support, ordering from a coffee truck. And then finally, on Saturday, we have our special fundraiser magic show with David Gishner, who's an alum. Tickets are open seating and are ten dollars and are still available for purchase on Cure Eight. In the arts, our Orchuses performances of Engage opened this week on Thursday, and tickets are still available for purchase. And in addition to giving our staff a preview at last week's staff meeting, the express singing group took a train into Chicago over the weekend for a day of caroling at the train station, Chris Kindlemart, The Bean, and in Macy's. And they also held a family and friends concert yesterday, raising three hundred dollars for the hurricane relief efforts. They only have ten more performances to go this holiday season. They're very busy. In athletics, just some special congratulations to our varsity boys' wrestling team, who defeated Evanston last Thursday, and our varsity girls' team, who placed eleventh in the Waukegan Girls Tournament this weekend, but especially to our first-place finishers in their weight classes, freshman Leah Stringfellow and sophomore Ariella Dobbin. Our varsity girls' basketball team is off to a great start with a six-one record. Our boys' swimming and diving opened their season on Friday against Lyon Township High School, and there was great performances on the team, even though Lions came out on top, but our team included faster times in our relays and individual events than this point last year, showing a lot of growth on our team. Congrats to our boys' basketball team, who defeated Mundeline this Saturday with a four-two record. Our boys' bowling team took fifth in the Vernon Hills Classic. Our dance team participated in the Lake Zurich Competition this weekend, and our girls' bowling team opened the season with two wins over North Chicago and Niles North. Our girls' gymnastics defeated Main West, and they will compete against Nutria and host the Spartan Classic this Friday. And in academics, I wanted to highlight our senior, Jayden Cho, who finished fifth nationally in the editorial cartoon category of the National Scholastic Press Association's Individual Awards Competition for his cartoon that accompanied an article entitled "Frequent Cannabis Cartridge Use May Impair Health." This is the third year in a row the torch has had at least one student place in the top five nationally. Additionally, congratulations to Mateo Atala, who received first place in the Italian-English Division of the twenty twenty-four twenty-five Illinois High School Translation Competition hosted by the University of Illinois European Union Center. Mateo translated an excerpt from Dario Vaultini's twenty twenty-four novel, Invernale, into English. And finally, at the National Conference for Teachers of English in Boston before Thanksgiving, Dr. Anna Schulz, our instructional supervisor of English, presented at the conference on a session about how leaders decide what truly matters in literacy leadership. And GBN English teachers Julianne Hill, Tim Broker, and Jared Zuckerman presented a session titled "Inspiring Student Voices: The Role of Digital Storytelling in Fostering Heart, Hope, and Humanity." This is the top national conference for teachers in the English field, and it was attended by over seventy-five hundred English teachers this year, and their sessions were very well-received. We're very proud of them.
Wow. That's a heck of a list. Thank you, Ms. Hughes, very much. And Dr. George, I think you're listening in, so thank you for putting that all together. It's so great to hear on so many levels that our district is shining, students and teachers alike. We're very, very fortunate, so thank you for sharing, sharing that information with us. Board members, anything you'd like to report tonight? Let's see. Mr. Galwayke, anything?
No, no thanks.
Okay, wonderful. Item five on our agenda is our consent agenda. Dr. Johns, I understand you had one change.
Yes, we had the wrong version of the attachments for the minutes, the agreements between Dr. Gravell and the board and me and the board, and we had a wrong date in the minutes as well. So both of those have been corrected and updated, so what is currently visible is the accurate version, are the accurate versions.
Excellent, okay. Any, anything else?
That is it.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
Mr. Galwayke?
Yes.
Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Segwin?
Yes.
Mr. Schein?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdy?
Yes.
Seven members voting yes.
Move to item six on our agenda, which is our public hearing, and the annual tax levy and various votes that attend that. We're going to run these all together. We'll start with six point one, which is the actual truth and taxation hearing. So at this time, I am opening the hearing on the proposed tax levy for twenty twenty-four. An estimated tax levy was made available to the community at November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Information about the levy was also published in the Glenview announcements in the Northbrook Star on Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Additional information regarding the school district's fund balance was made available on the school district's website through the twenty twenty-four fiscal year annual financial report and the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget. At this time, are there any questions on the tax levy from the board?
No.
Hearing none? And I don't believe anyone is here to address the board on the public hearing that we have signed up? Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed levy?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
All in favor?
Actually, I need a, pardon, I need a roll call, I'm sorry.
I'm really sorry. Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Segwin?
Yes.
Mr. Schein?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Galwayke?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdy?
Yes.
Some, seven members voting.
So with a vote of seven to zero as just recorded, I declare the hearing on the proposed levy for twenty twenty-four closed. As a reminder, we're going to be taking roll call votes for each and another three resolutions that follow for six point two, three, and four on the agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution to levy twenty twenty-four taxes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Segwin?
Yes.
Mr. Schein?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Galwayke?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdy?
Yes.
Seven members voting yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution regarding application of loss and cost factor to twenty twenty-four tax levies.
So moved.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Segwin?
Yes.
Mr. Schein?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Galwayke?
Yes.
Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdy?
Yes.
Seven, seven members voting aye.
Finally, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution to instruct county clerk how to apportion twenty twenty-four tax levy extension required.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
Ms. Segwin?
Yes.
Mr. Schein?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Galwayke?
Yes.
Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdy?
Yes.
Seven members voting yes.
I want at this point to give special thanks to Dr. Gravell, and Ms. Tarver, and so many others who worked on putting together these materials. It's an enormous undertaking. It's part of our fiscal stewardship to make sure that our district is able to run at the level of excellence it has for decades, and being able to work with our community is so supportive, is a very special relationship that we honor and deeply appreciate. So again, thank you for all of your efforts on this. I do believe we have next to us also a budget in brief and a popular annual financial report, so those are consistent with this very important financial, set of financial resolutions they were doing tonight. So again, thank you for your efforts on that. Item seven on our agenda is our, has a sole issue, is our superintendent transition planning. And before I turn this over to Dr. Johns, who's going to run through this, I'd like to just share a statement, which we've actually put in some response letters, a couple of questions, but to give you some idea of people who have contacted the Board of Education about our selection of Dr. Gravell as our superintendent, and I'll read from this. "The Glenbrooks are one of the finest districts in the country, and Dr. Gravell has been instrumental in helping us achieve this status. As the board entrusted with hiring and evaluating the superintendent, stewarding the district's budget and investments, and determining school goals, priorities, and policies, we take our responsibilities seriously. To find a superintendent, school boards may take a number of approaches, such as using search committees, firms, surveys, and job postings, drawing from internal leadership development, and executing long-term succession planning. Our board has employed each of these methods at various times. Whether used independently or in combination, they all aim to ensure that our district maintains its high standards of excellence while moving forward with its myriad initiatives. With Dr. Johns' retirement less than two years away, we fortunately have an extraordinary opportunity in Dr. Gravell, whose executive duties and deep understanding of our district have grown over the years. Dr. Gravell's proven track record of success has been recognized across the state, and his efforts in championing positive change, coupled with his dedication to our district, have positioned him uniquely as a leader. Our fortune is all the greater, given the more than seventy-five districts in Illinois alone that are wrestling with superintendent vacancies and the impacts that such a shortage is having on our schools. We therefore determined, if a careful evaluation, to select Dr. Gravell and direct our resources towards implementing a comprehensive succession plan with a detailed schedule, beyond bringing us a known outstanding administrator. This approach will allow for an especially smooth transition without the typical year or more of startup. Instead, our district will be able to continue focusing on its strategic plan, strengthening our schools, and enhancing our students' learning experiences. As part of our transition, the board would welcome our input from our community and their help along the way. In the coming months, starting with our welcome reception for Dr. Gravell, a week from tomorrow, December seventeenth, here in the boardroom at thirty-eight Owen Westlake, from five thirty to seven, we would be happy to have people here to help us, and we hope that you'll join us on that evening, as well as other times over the next several months, some of which you'll hear about tonight. These will be meetings where we'll be meeting with various groups as we work together to implement the district's programs and strategic initiatives. Again, we appreciate all of the input that we've received and contact, people who have contacted us, and we look forward to our collaboration as we strive towards new levels of excellence across academics, athletics, activities, and the arts. And with that preface, Dr. Johns, I know you're here to give us some updates on transition planning, particularly over the next couple of months.
Well, thank you. I won't be doing much of the talking. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gravell, because it's his plan. But with the announcement of Dr. Gravell as the next superintendent, it gives us a very unique opportunity, and that the onboarding process can begin right away. And a key part of that, and I think Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Gravell's made it very clear, is that he wants to get off to a great start and have a seamless transition, and he has acknowledged repeatedly, and he's already begun working on it, a full, active engagement process with members of our school district community. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gravell, as he's going to highlight this pretty impressive list of activities that he is undertaking to begin this engagement or continue this engagement process, starting, really, it started last week. Dr. Gravell?
Thank you so much, Dr. Johns and Mr. Dowdy. First and foremost, thank you to everyone who is able to join us today in person, as well as online. Today was a really exciting day. I had an opportunity to attend our Glenbrook South Journalism classes and participate in my first press conference, which was really cool, when I had probably about twenty-five students asking questions of all different types, in terms of my background, goals for the future, and things of that nature. And one of the important themes that I heard from multiple students is, you say that you're interested in hearing other opinions and learning from others, what does that actually look like? And I think part of that is previewed in just the first two months of our transition plan. Over the next few weeks here, I'm simply taking the opportunity to visit departments and meet with our staff, which I've been doing for the past few years, but having a little bit of a different conversation, learning what's working well, where we might have areas for growth. And then, as we're starting to work through things this spring, making sure that as we are reviewing different practices in anticipation of the next school year, that we're inviting students to the conversation, inviting parents to the conversation, hearing their views, and using those views to make more informed decisions, and decisions that ultimately set us up for great success in the district. Part of that is making sure that everyone knows the great celebrations that are happening, many of which were served or shared by Mrs. Hughes today, and also Dr. Georges remotely. many of which were served or shared by Mrs. Hughes today, uh, and also Dr. George is remotely. Um, but recognizing that we have a lot of things going so well today, and we wanna take some time to recognize our student success in the classroom, on the stage, on the field, and so on and so forth, and then use that to continue springboarding us, uh, into that direction of continued, um, excellence across our forays, but also looking to challenge us to innovate for the future. And so just to give you a little, or a few ideas of, um, different events that I'll be attending and sharing a few words with, and really just being present to have conversations, include, uh, this week, we are welcoming our multilingual learners that are coming in as eighth graders at Glenbrook South on Wednesday. Uh, we have another press conference, uh, at Glenbrook North this week. Uh, many different fine arts events coming up. Um, we also have our, um, annual art receptions at both schools. Uh, just an opportunity to meet with parents, meet with student artists, learn about how their classroom experience is turning into just absolute wonderful representations of their own expression. Um, we will have the welcome reception and a little early preview. Very fortunate that GBN Express will be dropping by towards the beginning of that, uh, around five-thirty, um, to do a, a little performance before they go to their winter concert, so very appreciative.
Are you gonna join them singing or anything like that? I know you have a musical background. Sorry to interrupt the train here, but...
There might be that musical background. We're gonna, we're kinda listening to the students first, and then the future. We, we shall see what...
I expect you'll listen to the talent show. Keep going, keep going. Sorry, keep going.
Yeah, um, as we continue into the spring, um, our parent associations, uh, will be hosting their general meetings. Looking forward to having an opportunity to meet, um, many of our, our active parent leaders, as well as, uh, just members of our parents across, uh, uh, rising freshmen, all the way through our seniors that are looking forward to graduating. Um, and then we have, we have some really exciting evenings coming up, when we welcome all of our rising freshman parents, uh, to learn about their course selections and what that process looks like coming to high school. Um, and so those are just a few items that we have, um, on the agenda. We'll be sharing the calendar so that members of our staff, our parents, our students, and our community can see it. Um, probably most important from all of this is, um, it's difficult sometimes to reach everyone. And so I always like to, to end with, if someone would like to have a conversation, anyone is welcome to reach out, send an email, make a phone call, um, kind of shameless plug, rjgravel@glenbrook225.org is my email, phone number eight-four-seven-four-eight-six-four-seven-four-five. Um, I think it's so important to have those natural, genuine connections, and I encourage individuals to reach out, if only just to say hi and introduce yourself. Um, love to, to meet even more of our community members. And I look forward to working with Dr. Johns as I also, um, uh, begin to get a little more engaged with our municipal leaders in the village of Glenview and the village of Northbrook, our township officials, county officials, and also our five, um, local school boards from our sender districts. Um, recognizing that in our community, we are fortunate to have so many amazing partnerships. Um, and it starts with our early childhood education, all the way through post-secondary experiences. So really looking to, to bridge those relationships and, and looking forward to the future.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Gravel. I'm sure we'll continue to hear about these on a regular basis. Dr. Johns, anything you wanna add at this point?
Uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, helping Dr. Gravel through these opportunities, and, uh, I look forward to the events that we get to do together. As you note, it's a always a great time with Dr. Gravel, and I think seeing some of these events together will be a great, great deal of fun, but I think they're great opportunities for our community. Uh, he's easy to engage with, and I hope that people take these opportunities to get to know him, 'cause he's the new face of the district. And I think that, um, building those relationships and those bonds as early as possible while he's in this transition process will benefit everyone.
Excellent, excellent. Um, one item, just a procedural item at this point, we have a long list of items over the next, I think it's six months, seven months, and I don't wanna take any time away from you. I think, seven months, yes, okay, a little under seven. Um, is, uh, and I, I've mentioned this to you, Dr. Johns, uh, a possibility of doing something that's also healthy for the board as we, uh, work together about, uh, possibly, uh, is something already set for, I think it's June, we're aiming for to have a board self-evaluation, which is something I think we have not done since twenty fifteen, but it's all is healthy. There's some interest in probably doing, possibly doing something earlier in the next, uh, month or two. And I think you're gonna reach out to IEASB, uh, which supervises those in closed session, uh, but, uh, do you have any in, uh, input on that at this point?
Yes, so I've reached out to, uh, since we talked about it, I reached out to, um, Arlana, who is the regional representative of the IEASB, who would serve us and bring our board through that training. Uh, she's been on vacation and got back today. So she is, uh, looking for dates both in June, um, but would like to have some more conversations with the two of us in terms of other details.
So something maybe earlier on, that we could do earlier on with this present board, 'cause we have a new board coming on, so. Um, what I would suggest is this, let's do that when she's settled back in, uh, and then we can let the board know, and we can look at what possibilities are, and we'll keep in touch from that way.
Very good.
Uh, and thank you for, I know, Ms. Mullenbeck, you've raised that, and thank you very much for doing that. Excellent. Board members, any questions or comments on what Dr. Gravel shared so far? Ms. Mullenbeck?
I just wanted to point out one thing, was the very first thing on, um, the large chart of, um, activities that you and, uh, Dr. Johns are gonna be engaged in in the next, um, month or two. But, um, we started off, uh, on the fifth, we had our communications committee meeting, and I know many, many, many people in our, um, school community responded to the survey that we sent out, so thank you very much for that. But I just wanted to say that, um, it was great at that meeting to have you join us, um, Dr. Gravel, and it was, it really was a, a seamless meeting of the minds with, with, um, Dr. Gravel jumping in and, um, with Dr. Johns moving that effort forward. It's a big project, and it's gonna take some time, but I, I'm confident that it's going to move very smoothly and, as you pointed out, with low lag time here. We, we've got you right on board, so moving right through that. I'm, I'm looking forward to making good progress there.
Thank you, Ms. Mullenbeck. Other questions or comments, folks? Mr. Steinberg?
First one, I just wanna up your offer, and I, I think, you know, I, I did high school at different countries, so when I do the comparisons, you know, the openness, you know, the ability that our parents, and I was a parent in this district when I had my two children, have to access teachers, to access instruction supervisors, to us, to access building leaderships and the superintendent. It's here. Sometimes we forget about it, and we look at the leadership as, is the leadership open or is the leadership not open? There are so many access points, and, and sometimes we wait until something is not as pleasant as we want to come and talk to people. But there are so many opportunities to come and just simply share, like we had today here, a nice comment about something that happened or something I like from the district, and that's normally way more successful than reaching out for the first time when you have a problem, establishing the relationship. So I really appreciate you starting with that attitude, but I think it should be recognized that we have this attitude already on many other people in the district, and people should take benefit of that, because it's not everywhere. It's not, we talk always about resources, but attitude is as important as resources, and we have that attitude here. The second thing maybe was my being, as you mentioned earlier, people send questions. I think the questions were about the process, not about Dr. Gravel per se.
No, no. Yeah, no, no, no one, no one...
Yes, yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Asking about your capabilities, and we're asking about how, how we work on this thing.
Yep, thank you for the clarification. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, I have a, I guess, follow-up in relation to Dr. Gravel's, uh, the plan he just articulated, and, and follow-up to communications. Uh, Dr. Gravel, did you mention a site that would be set up and listed, uh, with what these upcoming events were in the transition plan? I, I couldn't recall if that was mentioned.
Uh, we didn't mention it, however, there is an updated superintendent page on the school district website, located at glenbrook225.org. Go ahead and locate the district and then superintendent. Um, and I'll be working with the communications department after today's meeting to get the schedule up, uh, and also some of our, uh, social media postings that are chronicling, uh, this journey as we're going through, um, meeting, uh, folks and, and having great conversations.
So that's a wonderful resource, and that sounds like it's a living resource that will keep updating and changing as, uh, the plan goes down its path.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glawacki. Any other questions or comments? Well, we look very, uh, very much forward, Dr. Gravel and Dr. Johns, working with you, uh, on this transition. It's an exciting period for us, uh, as we make a transition as seamlessly as possible, uh, for the future of our district to continue, uh, its excellence on so many different levels. Uh, item eight on our agenda is the summary of the meeting. We did have one, uh, speaker this evening offering comments, which we much appreciate. Uh, we had an extensive report, uh, from our schools, uh, regarding first, uh, the fire incident, uh, the True North situation, which we'll be watching, amendment, uh, for the paid time off, uh, also watching carefully. And then wonderful, uh, discussions of our many, uh, endeavors in athletics, uh, women in business, model UN, uh, efforts to, uh, hurricane relief in North Carolina, the arts with express calering, caroling, uh, literally all over the place in Chicago land, which is a wonderful gift, and orcasus, uh, another award in editorial cartooning, that one we hadn't heard before, which is great, and, uh, the Italian translation award even as well. So wonderful to see that, and efforts by our teachers at the National Conference of the Teachers of English. It's great to see not just attendance, but so much participation, showing the leadership, uh, in our district is all the way through, down, uh, throughout our faculty, uh, the meeting across the country and, and setting great examples. It's much appreciated. Uh, we then had our, uh, consent agenda, which, with a couple of minor adjustments, uh, passed. We had our truth and taxation hearing. Uh, we passed three resolutions for our twenty twenty-four taxes. Uh, and we used, just to clear, twenty twenty-four, because the taxes are in arrears, so, uh, that's why we say it that way. Uh, and then we had our, uh, discussion about the superintendent transition planning process, uh, and, and what's coming forward. It's a very exciting time for our district. Um, item nine, uh, is next meetings and our future, uh, topics. I think our next meeting is on January the thirteenth, thirteenth. Uh, if you have any topics, please do raise them with me and with, uh, Dr. Johns. Item ten, our agenda is closed session. Uh, we do have that tonight. I'll entertain a motion to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel of the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Security procedures and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public or public property, and student disciplinary cases pursuant to sections two, C, one, eight, and nine of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna take five minutes. Uh, we are, just so people know, we're not expecting any action out of, uh, out of the closed session, so thank you. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Glowacki at 10:02, we are back.
And we are back. Item 11, possible action regarding topics discussed in closed session. There is none. Item 12, adjournment, no taken motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here and none.
Favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
10:02.
Thank you.